We see that that's gonna go up or needs to go up because the cost of healthcare is going up.
So, I, I know you said we don't discuss the, um, salaries. But those are right now what's currently on these salary ordinance. That's why I made the comment they're on, on that side.
Um, so then we can change them anyway?
No.
So we don't need to discuss them?
Right.
That's fair too?
Okay.
We can do eight, that's healthcare.
Right.
So I came with that figure, I'm sorry, um, how, um, what the month, the last monthly invoice for that department sometimes I buy twelve?
Okay.
Which one are we on? Number eight.
Employee.
Police one.
Police.
Police department one. We skipped down the line number eight. Alright, so then.
So we stand with two hundred and twenty-one thousand?
What except that, that's what I had.
Unless we get rid of some of them, we could go down.
I don't think we'll be doing that.
Okay.
Thank you for the last line.
What is that H R A? What is that saying for?
Insurance deductible.
Oh, that is, that's also insurance?
It's the, it's what covers the accident deductible.
Alright, so that would, that's good at twenty thousand, we leave that. So the full time, part-time officers? That's for the contract that you came up with those numbers?
For the contract and, um, any more part-time as well.
So the full time is five seventy-five and part-time is what?
Yeah, it increased the presence on the streets for their officer, so that may increase the, uh, budget, so that's why we get the increase for this budget here.
So may, on the last column, where's this draft for the budget, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, that's what we're working with. And the column, the column to your left?
Twenty-two, right?
Where it says the.
Employee twenty-two.
The G L, that's what the actual ended up with, that's the amount that ended up with the G L balance, what went through for that fiscal year. And then the next column is whether it was under or over. And then.
So we budgeted four thirty, twenty-two there? Eight forty.
Right.
Okay.
So maybe the police full-time or whatever.
Alright, we're okay.
We'll love eight first.
So go to the police section and then we found the line, no, we're way down, we're twelve already. Right, we're good with eleven, right?
Mm-hmm.
We're good with eleven. We're at twelve.
What about five?
We were good with ten, that was the hard ten.
No, that's full time.
Oh, P T, per ten.
Ten is F T.
Oh, eleven. We're good with ten and eleven, I thought.
Okay.
Yeah, confusing. So we're going to twelve.
Mm-hmm.
That's court.
Ten is, that should be.
It's going down, that's good.
Yes.
Impound hearing officer, that's going down, that's good.
Mm-hmm.
We, this will play hearing officer.
That's been removed.
We're gonna remove that.
Okay, that's good. The chaplain stays the same. That's good. Prosecutor stays the same?
Yes.
Longevity stays the same?
Yes.
Clothing allowance stays the same, that's all good. Safety, good, good. We're going all the way to twenty-one. Pension stays the same.
Mm-hmm.
And employment insurance stays the same. Medicare taxes, that's stays the same. Legal services, special counsel, we haven't been using it, so that's going down.
Yeah, that went down, yeah.
Outside services stay the same. I T maintenance, it's going down.
Outside services, but.
Outside services.
Yeah, it's through central dispatch.
So that stays the same.
One that's going up, I guess you got one down.
I T maintenance, did we put that extra monitor in there, Luke, for them, or no? Remember the one we talked about for their room?
Yeah, I know.
Oh, good. Okay. That was that much anyway. Um, terminals need to go up?
Yes.
So you need, we're upgrading them, or were you missing some?
So we need, uh, the computer terminals in each vehicle. Through central dispatch, they can send them information and all the vehicles need them, so that's all.
Okay, so that's gonna go up. Okay. E T S D, that goes down. Good, good.
What is E T? Emergency something?
It's, uh, the nine-one-one fund, so it's through central dispatch, it's all the towns that are with central dispatch. Uh, the nine-one-one fund through like your cell phone.
Okay.
So that tax you pay, it all goes into a fund and this is part of it, so if we need new radios for the police officers, we can ask nine-one-one fund for that.
Okay, professional, the next page, line forty-nine. Consulting expense, that's going down, or we didn't use it?
Inactive, no.
Becoming inactive. Police services, contract, we haven't really been using all fifteen, so it's going down, that's good. Police supplies are going up, two grand, cost of everything's going up, we know that.
That's for ammo.
Oh, it is?
Tactical items, stuff to be about.
And then office supplies, that's going up a little bit. Okay, postage.
It's a new item, so then every department's gonna have postage as part of that.
So then you broke it down to what percentage is theirs and that's how you came up with that number?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, publication expenses, that went down. Okay. That other account becomes inactive.
Mm-hmm.
Office equipment, vehicle purchase, did he put his Escalade in there? The chief's been hitting for a long time, you know, he wants an Escalade.
He said suburban yesterday, but.
Oh, he switched? He downgraded? The same vehicle, just a different emblem on it?
Yeah.
No, it's not. It really isn't, it's a joke.
An Escalade and a suburban?
No, that's not really what he wants.
No, but I'm just kidding, he's been, he's been, he's been joking.
I am a test clerk, I don't.
Yeah.
It was a joke.
It's a joke.
But it was the same, isn't it the same, basically the same motor, the same?
I apologize, it's just a joke.
The same, yeah.
Well, really, you might rest that.
Okay.
It's a joke. It's my job, I don't.
So, do you need that many vehicles?
So, we're hoping to receive two new vehicles, um, due to the age of, of later vehicles now. And the.
We didn't do one last year.
No, we didn't do one last year, so instead of one, now two, and they're about fifty thousand, plus the radios, lights, sirens, everything now. Approximately sixty thousand per vehicle now, so that's where the two vehicles at sixty thousand were requesting a hundred twenty thousand.
Now, we used to buy sedans, now we have to buy S U Vs, so that's the difference in the price.
Now, are we still having a problem finding them?
No, it looks like we.
That's improved?
Yeah, it's improved, yes.
Is that that same place we got the quote from the truck, that Curry? Probably, right? They probably, they don't have the state contract?
No.
Still working on that, yeah.
Oh, who has the state contract? Because whoever has it gives you the best deal, but sometimes we have to drive to Springfield to pick them up.
Right.
Okay. Office supplies, lease goes down. Maintenance is new, office equipment. Vehicle repair and maintenance is going up, just because we're spending way more than we budgeted.
Mm-hmm.
That's because the vehicles are old. Thirty-nine, we jumped to thirty-nine. Hopefully it won't be so bad once we get a couple of new vehicles.
The new vehicles, hopefully they're a plateau level now.
So with them, um, riding extras, I mean, they, um, taking them, um, holding, bringing, bagging, adding extra, added to them, and depreciating. And I'm not saying we'll stop it, I'm just saying that.
I didn't know we were discussing take-home vehicles. I didn't know we were discussing that take-home vehicle.
Well, we're discussing take-home vehicles, but that's a component.
So I don't know, sure, that, I mean, that has that much value. Most people, we live right here.
No, that depends how far you live.
Oh, okay, I thought we had most guys, just have a burning area?
No. They do say when they, uh, vehicles assigned to a police officer, he takes better care of the car because he's the only one that drives it, right? Isn't that a statistic that's proving?
Well, that's the point we're trying to get to.
So then you have to get to that many cars that everybody drives the same one, but then you don't want somebody driving the vehicle, they live set sixty miles from here. That would be the issue, right? Then the maintenance is gonna go up because they're gonna be driving an extra, you know, a hundred twenty miles every day to and from home, so.
And we got one person, we had to kick him in the hole with his car, but we won't call him that.
So let's just hopefully we're getting new vehicles and the maintenance will go down. We were offered that, that new company, a Mackinac, offered to look at our maintenance, if you wanna use them or think about using them.
I'll, I'll.
Hundred forty-third Mackinac, right?
I'll speak to the chief and.
I mean, it might be. Not really. But a different company's taken over that property, we kinda hinted to him that we might have some maintenance work. I mean, it's cheaper and reliable and they're in town, but the other one is in town also, right? Okay. So.
Are you, are you maintenance?
Well, just when we talked about maintenance, the, the worst offender walked in.
Well, I do know.
We're just kidding, just kidding.
We don't like kids.
Tires on a pickup truck. No. He's okay.
Radio maintenance.
That stays the same, that's okay. Phone service went a little bit over. But he's looking to go down, how?
Oh, we got new phone service, right?
So, we have those line items that go down, that's the cable internet service, so before the, that line item was included in the phone service.
Oh, okay.
So now it's split. So now phone service is less. And so is the, so now there's an amount for those in, cable and internet service.
Okay, with security, and there's two separate ones, okay.
And a comic on my side.
I see that, I see that, okay. Then dues and membership, that's going down, that's good. Gas and oil prices have gone up, so that needs to go up. Personnel training, looks like we just need to go up a little tiny bit, good. Health exams was okay. Prisoner meals was okay. Impound expenses stayed the same. I T purchases.
I don't know. So is that where it's spent? Almost half of it, right?
I believe that's the T V's correct, or the I T.
Shouldn't be, because that was just the word, we can't have that yet. It'll be something else. Technical. What?
I was gonna add the I T.
Let's get that over there.
That was two Dell PCs, a printer, a remote PC soft, and a network switch. That equals twenty-three sixty-seven.
Okay. Small equipment purchases, that stays the same. We didn't use it. Major case task force money needs to go up a little bit, that's alright. And there's a couple new items there, regulatory compliance.
Mm-hmm.
And what was that one about?
That's for, uh, if a OSHA related. And that's, I believe that's all the part, uh, police and fire both had there.
If by the time it has its own separate item for that as well?
Yes.
Building repairs and maintenance, seventy-five hundred, that's a new item?
So not everybody, instead of public works carrying the whole load, each building, like, um, police and admin will split it. Public works will have their own, water will have their own, senior center will still be under public works. And that community center?
Okay.
I think it's a separate.
I'm actually willing to put the roof there.
Um, originally it was under public works. Because it was last this fall, but now it's split.
Okay. So I, I skipped around these kinda quick because I looked at the total number ahead of time and he was well within the five percent increase. So that's why I was kinda skipping through them pretty quick. Because he wasn't trying to spend too much more than they did last year. I wanna know exactly what it was I, I have it, but this total.
It's right there, on the bottom of the table.
Okay, so Stephen, so, uh, uh, which is speaking on behalf of the chief, so, uh, was there anything unforeseen that you might predict that could come up or might come up, do you think? Or that's not in here?
No, not at this time. I think just more of the increased presence, as you requested out there, uh, may increase the overtime. So that could increase the, uh, budget there. But, uh, and then obviously the fuel and gas could go up and as well as repair and maintenance as well, the more we're out there, the more we're using the vehicles. But, uh, hopefully we can stay where we're in.
And then back there, on the third page, it gets things like bigger from previous implementations and. Each year of the term.
And we also increased our revenue by twenty-three thousand with the hard work of the police officers last year, um, from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two, so.
So how much was it in?
Uh, seventy-two thousand, three forty-five, and it increased to ninety-five thousand.
We did talk recently about we need to go through our ordinances, increase the fines. Because some of our fines are so low, it's like nonexistent, and we talked about fireworks being one of them. Where the other towns are charging twenty-five hundred dollars or seven hundred and fifty dollars, and we're letting people off for nothing. And there's other ones too, right? You have a whole list of ones, we need to get with Stanley and Changeford soon. Where someday when Stanley can hear, his hearing aids are hidden, but we need to get him work on some of them. Because some of our fines are so cheap, it's like, it's like no big deal to commit a crime.
Well, since we got the police here, so isn't the fact that, um, that the fines are not, uh, fines are not even dropping enough, uh? Or just so many people shooting fireworks, we can't help it?
The fines are so low, it's not even a deterrent.
Right.
Right, they're only fifty dollars.
It's nothing, fifty dollar fines, today it really is pennies.
Yeah, but I'm saying, have we been fining people for that, for the fireworks at all, or we just go around?
Right, written, saw, but it's kinda hard to isolate the individual who's playing with fireworks when you got a group there and they're just walking around. I mean, if we can, we do, chances are we don't find the exact person, but we do decide it's solved.
What does the audit say? Does the audit hold, the whole audit is possibly?
Yeah, it should be, but it's real low, because I mean, other towns have twenty-five hundred or seven hundred and fifty, why we let them off fifty bucks or a hundred bucks? We need to raise the fees, it's more a deterrent for people to stop committing crimes, you know, the fines are all so low, so we need to look at that seriously before.
The handicaps only a hundred on our papers, but the state is two fifty.
Oh, so yes, it's the handicap parking illegal and we're going to charge, yes, so we have quite a few that need to be looked at.
Illegal dumping.
Oh, that's another one too? Fly dumping, is that what they call that?
That's five hundred.
Oh, overweight, the overweight fines also should have a new schedule to it.
Oh, the overweights are low?
Yeah.
So it makes, make a note, we need to go over all those.
It makes them a deterrent.
Yeah, regularly, it does.
Chief, not as I said, make a note, I have the note, so like you said, once we get to sit down with Stanley, since that's.
We need to tell Stanley, we want this to be this and this, give him a whole list of what we need to be increased. I'm sure you guys have, fire has some things they might wanna change too, but. We're letting the bad guys off too easy.
Mayor, clerk, trustees, thank you for all your support.
You're welcome.
Thank you for always helping.
Absolutely.
Alright, folks, it's time for you to take your hot seat.
Okay. I'm gonna bring my deputy chief for me too.
We don't have two chairs up front?
Well, we're gonna get two.
An Escalade, it's a towel. Are you kind of, could be, you kind of too, right, I can't bend it down? So then again, we should could skip to what, six or seven then? Yeah. Yeah, that's fair.
About the eight.
Okay. Yeah, the other one goes away, so go to eight. And they've really used it, so they don't want, uh, they were over. Special counsel, if they wanna go back to a thousand?
Yeah, we know what that was pertaining to. But you get that legal services.
Yeah?
It'd be illegal towards firemen, the job itself.
It must have been a split of means of.
Okay, then we will, we can take it with this protocol.
Alright, so can we get past that one? We're, we're at nine?
Yeah.
We set up a new line item for you, it's only put two hundred dollars in there, that's okay?
We do most of our I T stuff, it's basically for the fobs or for the, 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 the cameras, that's all. Other than, other than that, we do most of our I T stuff.
Uh, this supplies are just going up a little bit too?
No, there's.
Stay the same.
Yeah.
Hostage is new?
Yeah, we don't use too much postage. We did last year for the, um, raffle, but we, we're gonna go back to the original way we used to go, where we just put the, we did our own.
With the wheelbarrow?
Yeah, we'll put it at home, we'll do that on our, on our own.
Okay, net foot gas, then you're gonna stay the same, new equipment?
Office equipment, pretty much, office equipment, our association takes care of that, we sold, we bought the last couple of computers and.
Part of your, your officer's.
So.
Alright, what about vehicle purchase, what do you need?
Vehicle purchases, well, I'm looking for, I'd like to get like a utility vehicle or for, uh, like the officers to increase our officer presence on calls. So if we might have an on-duty officer and they can take their car and that way they would guarantee me. And they say, I'm available for this night, if we get a call, I'll have an officer on the scene. So we're gonna look for, for a utility vehicle for that, for that, that's still in the works, but that's the plan at that. So I have somebody of ranking there. So what would we keep at that? If they would stay in the firehouse and then if they were to say, I'm gonna be available tonight, all night, they could take it to their house and then they would respond to that call, to any, to any call.
That'd be hilarious.
Very sorry, I got.
Like he could walk to the station.
That's what, and, and just, just alleviate, because there are, are increasing calls and with that.
Okay. Office, office equipment, you created a new line item, but you didn't put any money in it?
No, because office equipment, again, the association, you know.
That's your copier.
Yeah, oh, okay.
So that's the maintenance in order to get the toner and all that?
Oh, that's what that's for, that's not supply, okay, that's, okay.
Right, so that was ninety-seven fifty, so ninety-seven fifty times twelve, that should be going there.
Okay. So that's for the toner.
For the maintenance for the copier, because the copier doesn't have to be, we just squat up.
Okay.
You said it was ninety-seven fifty for a month?
So, well, I don't.
Eleven, 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 seven.
Yeah, so like twelve, twelve, either do like twelve hundred or something, you can even.
Yeah.
But then the next item, you had money, office equipment, maintenance. Yeah, with that, a thousand fifteen.
Oh, never mind, never mind, swap it, it goes, that one fifty is, is, is the copier, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's the lease.
Yeah.
And then the maintenance is, is zero.
There's no lease, yeah, so the lease, I mean, you don't have any leases.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
So really the maintenance is too low then, actually, it should have been higher. And it's almost two hundred a month.
So change it to twelve hundred?
Oh, no, it's almost a hundred a month, right?
Right, yeah, hundred.
So it should make it go a hundred.
That's amazing, the lease will be zero, because they don't have currently a lease. Do you guys expect anything that you'll be leasing?
No. I mean, as far as it goes for our small equipment, you know, like for office stuff and printers and we're not, we got a couple of guys who are savvy on that stuff. And we just go by it, you know, with that association, you know, dues two percent or, you know, the savings, we get that stuff on our own. We generate our own funds for that.
I think I'll do respect, chief, remember we had an I, an I T?
Right, correct.
Right, so the maintenance, please don't buy the toner, because it's part of that maintenance.
No, 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 we wouldn't, no, the toner does, yeah, absolutely, the toner.
And if anything goes wrong with it.
Yeah, the toner, I'm talking if we, you know, like, like, uh, you know, just little things, that, you know, like if we needed a computer or something, obviously. We haven't had one in a while, but we got guys that can manage that stuff, that are pretty good. Like our projector for our classroom, our training and stuff like that, if something like that, yeah, breaks or something, that's what we use our stuff for, okay?
Alright, so the maintenance is okay from twelve thousand to six thousand?
Yeah, yeah, we, uh, we pretty much keep our vehicles, you know, in pretty good shape. I mean, if it was up to me, I'd change my own oil, I'm my chief's car, because I just like doing it.
So the radio maintenance, then you're okay going down? Equipment maintenance, you're okay going down?
Yep.
Phone service is going down?
Yep.
Cable and internet, that's the new ones you set up?
Yeah, that's the air cards.
Dues?
Dues is through our association, I guess.
Um, fuel costs are going up a little bit, that's okay?
Yeah, we've had twenty-five percent increasing calls, so.
Training is, they just saying that's.
That's target solutions, that's the program where we send out an assignment, they do it, and that covers, uh, pretty much OSHA training and stuff you need for OSHA.
Uniform.
And as well as more.
Uniform, you're saying you could go down the whole?
Oh, yeah, the uniforms are, uh, pretty much, you know, so, you know, basically uniforms are for badges, patches and stuff like that. As far as, uh, we, we, uh, we did a thing where everybody's gonna get a class A now and the association picked up some. And, uh, came from another fund, so our uniforms, that's, that's just pretty much it for badges and patches.
Okay, so safety, you're okay, I T purchases, you're okay?
Correct.
Equipment purchases, you're okay going down?
Yeah, because we, we've had, uh, over the last year with some grants and whatnot, we were okay, we were pretty much good on equipment.
To access your fire station, now, do you guys have cards to swipe at the door?
We have fobs.
A fob on, okay.
There's also.
Police wanna do something like that, right?
We, we had a fob, we, yeah, we have a fob, they love, they log in who's in, who's out, obviously the cameras. And then I want it on one door, in case somebody forgot their fob, it's still a combination, but they have to call me for the combination. I think the mayor had called me one time for that combination.
I had to look it up. I had to look it up. Okay, so the next one, you're okay? General funds, good, contract emergency services, that's.
That's for taking.
Half must go to police then, right, that's why?
No, this is a quarterly for the ambulance, it's not for dispatch.
We budgeted way more than a spend, son. We budgeted way more than a suspension.
No, it's one of them, I was gonna go on that official.
Oh, okay, okay.
Seven, six, quarterly, that's seven thousand six seventy-seven, which is on the right side.
Okay, so. E M S equipment and supplies, you're going down a little bit.
Yes, uh, we, we have promoted, uh, an E M S coordinator, and she is on top of our stuff. When it gets ready to expire, we swap it out at Eagles, so she has got us well to do. As a matter of fact, on my way over here, she was at the firehouse going through the medical bags and updating them.
Would that be Sabrina?
That's Sabrina, she's phenomenal, so.
Okay, so then, building repairs and maintenance, it looks like you think you're in good shape?
Yeah, we're in good shape, again, going back to grants and some of the refund and that, we were able to take care of a lot of things.
Okay, fire inspection expenses, that stays the same, contingency stays the same, okay. Looks good to me. The numbers are good, uh, twenty percent increase too, so.
I, I, I do have a couple of things to add. I have talked to the mayor, going back to what you said earlier about the ordinances, the mayor gave me a letter, and there's a way, per Illinois law, that you can bill for. Fire calls, C O calls, non-E M S calls, you can bill, and we're looking into that to generate some funds. And if you're basically building insurance companies, so if a truck or fire guy rips his gear, you can bill, just the mayor, they work. I am in touch with the mayor, yeah, yeah, we're still investing. I talked to him, he said, basically what she said, we work for you, if we don't get, you know money, we don't get the money. That's something that we're looking into.
That'll be another thing we probably have to, you know, Stanley worked on again, right?
Cause it would definitely have to go on the ordinance.
Yeah.
Uh, another thing, they've said, uh, our grant guy is working on a grant that looks very good, I was hoping to have some good news for you this, tonight. It's a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant on recruitment and retention. Buy guys a year, gear, train, everything, if we can get that. I was hoping you'd be able, but he got a call, usually you don't get that call if it ain't good, but he's still waiting, the holiday pushed everything back. So hopefully, fingers crossed, we, we get that, we'll be good with that. And then, just to reiterate, like the mayor always says, Burnham's doing the best it's ever been, so is the fire department, on account of you, the mayor and the trustees, for allowing me to do what we need to do. Simple as that, and I appreciate it.
They're always, you know, they're always looking for grants, always.
Yeah, Dave is, Dave is amazing, Dave is amazing. Anything we can, we missed out on the one state grant, but from what I understand, there was only one fire department in Cook County that got it. Everything was down south, so that was through the state of Illinois, now we're doing federal.
Couple months ago, and I had all the specifics, which I don't have anymore, but just let your guys know, not to be speeding on Burnham when they're not going to a fire. Because we had an incident one morning, and I don't remember the exact date, but one of the guys in the mini pumper was going really fast, and once he saw me, he slowed down.
Hmm, okay.
So let them know that.
Absolutely.
Because of the gas and the wear and tear on the vehicle.
And that's.
We expect him to go no faster than the speed limit, just like all of our residents, unless there's a fire emergency, but there wasn't that time.
Even, even when there is a fire emergency, still they're supposed to perceive a caution.
And I did bring that up to the police, and I didn't know what day and what time, and I don't know that anymore, but I, didn't I talk to you about that? I talked to the chief.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll.
And it was some, once they saw me, they sure slowed down.
Absolutely, I wish you had brought it to my attention too.
And, and I, we knew, what we knew, yeah, I did bring it to your attention.
You dropped them, walked out, going to the east side, by time you get there, you know, blew it in. Well, you ain't, if you don't get there, you, you ain't getting nobody in there.
Cause when he got on my bumper, he sure hit the brakes fast, and then he slowed way down, so I didn't see who it was, so.
I wish I would've.
Yeah, I'm sure you would've yelled at somebody to slow down, but we don't expect, I mean, if there's a fire, there's a fire, if there's not a fire, and just take it easy on the gas. The maintenance and the fuel costs, right?
All the way.
And I knew the day and I knew the time, and I don't know it exactly. All right, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, just mentioned to you guys, take it easy.
I will, I'll sit on it.
You can even say I complain.
No, I don't have a problem with that, cause they, they know, but.
Did I talk to you about it that day?
One more?
Hey, Chief.
Yeah. Come on, fire. What about this though?
Seven fire, I gotta work.
Okay.
Thursday night, you're working?
Yeah, seven thirty, yeah.
Just let me know you're coming, and we'll sit, we'll talk, all right, whatever you want.
Wait, 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 can you, you didn't hear the whole story? You let me set up that meeting for tomorrow night, when you get to the apartment, does it go late tomorrow night, or you wanted to see?
Me? That wasn't me, no, we didn't open.
No, Darius Ruck. You said something about Darius Ruck at night, and then you let us schedule this quick. You let, you, we talked about Darius Ruck. And then, and then we made that, but he don't come until after nine.
It's a short one.
Yeah, you left, and that's your fault. You let me focus Darius Ruck.
It's your fault.
Oh, I remember you.
Does everybody have the third one, it says board and fire and police commission?
Yes. I know we talked about it, I'll be there for the board. Darius Ruck is a festivalist. Yes, yeah, was you? Remember he said, you weren't even here, you weren't here, maybe, you can't be my witness. Reason I didn't know you were here. I might've been sitting by myself on this. No, it's tomorrow. And not till after nine, but the second, he isn't opening yet. All right, you ready, what line you wanna go to?
One. The third one. Board, fire, and police commission.
So administrative is okay, if it was a hundred, leave it a hundred.
Okay.
Attorney fees, you made them inactive.
Yeah.
Remove that one.
Yeah.
Special counsel, two thousand, leave it, good. Professional consultants was a thousand, we spent twenty-nine, twenty?
No, we spent thirty-nine, twenty.
Oh, thirty-nine, twenty, so I was looking into our concept, we went over twenty-nine, so we're gonna go up to four thousand. Court reporter fees, we're gonna keep it a thousand. Examination fees were six thousand, we were under that, so we're gonna go down to two thousand. Office supplies, go down a hundred, publication expenses, go down a hundred, dues and membership stay the same, contingency stays the same. All good?
Yes.
Looks all, that'll, looks all good to me. So what do we have tomorrow, public works and?
Public works, water, and sewage. Well, yeah, and admin.
So we're done?
Yeah.
We don't have to make a motion, I'm sure, because it's just, uh.